Yes.
He's there, we're ready. Okay, good evening, everyone, we're ready to begin. Uh, let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please stand and join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Roll call, please.
Um, Chair Goines.
He's excused. He's excused.
Acting Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Um, Commissioner Truesdale.
Excused.
Acting Vice Chair Evans.
Uh, present.
Commissioner Steinman.
Present.
Commissioner Dunham.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if applicable. Uh, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, there is a motion to approve the minutes of June 12th at the Planning Commission meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward, uh, for action? Uh, does anyone wish to speak on any of these items?
Mister Chairman, uh, good evening. Uh, Items number 13, 14, 15, and 16, GPA 28283, ZON 28281, SUP 28287, SDR 28286, as requested to be held in abeyance till the August 14th Planning Commission meeting. Um, Item number 28, SUP 28274, is requested to be held in abeyance to the July 24th Planning Commission meeting, and, excuse me, Item number 34 has, um, is being requested to be stricken by, by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone in attendance wish to speak on any of these items? Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, entertain a motion, uh, on the housekeeping items?
Um, I'll make a motion, but I'd like, if you could, staff, please, read again the numbers real quickly. I've got, um, 13 through 16 held in abeyance, and then the next set is what?
Item number 28, SUP 28274, and Item number 34, SDR 28321, and those are not related.
Thank you. Um, I would move to, uh, bring these forward as, uh, indicated, and we'll hold them.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
And, uh, we're striking the 34, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Motion.
Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries. Okay, we now move to the consent items. Uh, Item number 6 is the, uh, TMP 28262. The applicant owner is Town Vista's LLC. It's for a 372-unit condominium development on the south side of Echolod Point Drive, east of Fort Apache Road. Consent item? No report. No report? No one in attendance wishing to speak on it, so motion's in order?
I'll make a motion on Agenda Item 6, TMP 28262. Move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries. We now move on to the one motion, one vote items. The following items, um, that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be open at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. We have Items 7, 8, and 9. Item number 7 is RQR 28191. The applicant owner is AEMS4 Las Vegas Investments LLC. It's a five-year review of an approved variance, VO184-95, which allows a 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign billboard to be 144 feet from a residentially-zoned property where 300 feet is the minimum separation distance required at 4851 East Bonanza Road. Item number 8 is the VAC 28269. The applicant owner is 2920 Roland Ave LLC, to vacate a 30-foot-wide-by-379.97-foot section of Roland Avenue, south of Alexander Road. And number 9 is VAC 28278. The applicant owner is Patricia F. Jacobs et al., to vacate a portion of Constop Drive between Vegas Drive and Golden Hill Avenue. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak on any of those items, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. On Number 7, are they keeping that in nice shape?
Yes.
Let the record reflect it, the director nodded yes, an affirmative. I could hear it rattle. Okay. So, motion's in order, please?
Mister Chairman, I'll go ahead and, uh, move for approval, following the recommendation of the staff on the one motion, one vote items, 7, 8, and 9. Subject to all conditions, motion for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
So, Items 7, 8, and 9 will go forward to City Council on August 6th, and Item number 5, 6, is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the public hearing items. Item number 10 is variance 27954. The owner-applicant is Nevada Power Company, is to allow a 14-foot-tall wall where 8 feet is the maximum allowable height at 300 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. And companion, Item number 11, is Site Development Review 227953, is for electric utility substation with a waiver of landcaping standards. Uh, staff report, please?
Mister Chairman, the proposed substation installation is compatible with the development in the area, therefore, staff is recommending approval of the site development plan review. Staff is also recommending approval of the associated variance, as it would facilitate a higher level of public safety in regards to the high-voltage equipment on-site. If approved, the following condition changes are requested. Staff would like to revise Condition Number 1 of Item Number 10 to reflect a date stamp of 5/21/08 rather than the 6/18/08 that is currently indicated. Subsequently, staff would also like to revise Condition Number 2 of Item Number 11 to reflect a date stamp of 5/21/08 instead of 6/18/08, date stamp currently indicated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. For the applicant, uh, please state your name, please?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mister Chairman and members of the commission. Tom Dubrowski, uh, 6, 226 West Sahara. Uh, we're happy to bring this, uh, project before you, which we've been working on for about a year and a half. The proposed substation would provide, uh, additional service for local residents, the Serb Union Park as well. The in-service date is June, uh, January 1 of 2011. Uh, the land for the proposed substation is an interior parcel, basically positioned to the rear of the adjoining neighbors, and it's adjacent to existing transmission line and adjacent to an access drive from Martin Luther King. We have held two open houses, uh, for this project, and we've had a number of meetings with staff, and they are recommending approval of both applications, and we concur with the recommended conditions of approval. Uh, for clarification, uh, the staff did, report did indicate that our landscaping plan was short, uh, one tree from the required amount on the east buffer area, and two trees along the west buffer area. Uh, we will add those trees, um, just wasn't our intention to come up short there. Also, staff report indicated that we have four 70-foot-high transmission poles within the substation. Uh, for clarity, two of those poles will be 100 to 120-foot high. Uh, we remain to answer any questions we may have.
I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on these items, please come forward now and state your case. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Uh, turn it over to the Planning Commission members for discussion, possible motion.
Move? I'll make a motion, yeah. Make a motion on Agenda Item Number 10, which is VAR 27954, move for approval, subject to conditions, and the new one you read in here, was that for the second one we're doing? Or both?
Um, Mister Chairman, uh, there is a condition change on each one of them. Uh, on the variance, it was Condition Number 1 to reflect a date stamp of 5/21, and on the site development review, it is Condition Number 2 to reflect the date stamp correction.
So, a move for approval, subject to conditions listed, and the change?
And the, the applicant is accepting these, uh, condition changes?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries regarding Item 11?
Number 11, SDR 27953, move for approval, subject to conditions, and the change read in on Item Number 2 by staff.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries?
Both items, variance and site development plan review, or final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Moving on to Item Number 12, which is Site Development Review 27948. The applicant is the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. The owner is FC RTC 20 LLC, for a proposed transit-passenger facility with waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan build-to-line and land, and streetscape standards for the southwest corner of Bonneville Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard. Staff report, please?
Mister Chairman, the proposed transit-passenger facility is compatible with the existing and future residential, commercial, and civic developments in the area. Therefore, staff has recommend approval of the site development plan review request as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, I'd like to clear the public hearing open, and, uh, on behalf of the applicant, we have?
Uh, John Sodden, 7373 Peak Drive.
Uh, David Swallow, Regional Transportation Commission.
Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, before you today is the new location for what was the Downtown Transfer Terminal. Uh, it will be called the City, Central City Transfer Terminal. It is on First Street, Bonneville, Garsis, and Casino Center. Uh, it's an approximately 18,000-square-foot, two-story, uh, transit terminal building. The site will accommodate 16 coaches on-site and, uh, four coaches off-site along Casino Center. Uh, we agree with staff's recommendation, although there is one item that we wish to discuss, and that's the denial of the variance for the chokers, uh, for elimination of the chokers along First Street.
Okay, let's talk about what your proposal is.
Uh, Mister Chairman, Members of the commission, the, uh, the city has proposed projects-
And your name, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is David Swallow, Director of Engineering for the Regional Transportation Commission. Uh, the City of Las Vegas has proposed a one-way couplet project that will complement some of the development downtown Las Vegas. We, putting our buses at this site, will require signalized access to Bonneville Avenue, and in the interim, until that couplet is developed and some of the adjacent development comes in, we need to have signalized access, probably at First Street, as the project driveway on Bonneville is too close to Casino Center to signalize at this time. The, the proposal to, uh, have a variance on the chokers is to allow our buses to make the turning movements from the southern driveway on Garsis onto First Street.
Thank you. And when would you propose to put the required landscaping in?
It's not the landscaping, Chairman, it's eliminating those, those, uh, chokers.
The bowl out.
Okay. Look, I'm not for sure exactly what you're, what you're asking. Can you-
Yeah.
Explain to me what you're talking about when you say choker.
Go to the overhead, please.
Pardon me?
Go to the overhead, please, in the back.
In the Centennial Guidelines, there is a choker that's required at this intersection. And what we're requesting is that those chokers be eliminated in order for the, in the short term, for the buses to make that maneuver from First Street onto Bonneville.
Can you define a choker for me? I'm not, again, I'm not exactly sure what you're telling us.
I don't have a definition from what the Centennial Plan calls for.
Let's, uh, ask our Public Works staff to comment.
It was, um, chokers at intersection per Graphic 5 Downtown Centennial Plan.
If I may, Bart Anderson, Public Works.
Please.
I suspect what he's talking about is when the, at intersections, when you have the curb line bump out to reduce the, uh, street crossing width for pedestrians. Uh, it also provides shelter for parking areas. You might see bump outs for parking, and then the curb line moves back in again to reduce the street width at intersections. I suspect that's what he's talking about.
That's correct. If you, if you look at the site plan on the overhead along Casino Center, you can kind of see an indication of what the choker looks like. That's what we're asking to be waived along First Street, so that the coaches can make that movement onto Bonneville prior to the couplet coming online.
Mister Chairman, if I may, I, because we need to get this right for the record, I think you're gonna need to explain exactly what it is you want the council, the commission to approve. Just saying, get rid of the chokers for us doesn't do it for us. Can you point, can you point to that site plan and show us what it is you want to have done?
Actually, we just want the, the curbs to be at the corners to be, to reflect what we have here on the site plan, and not have these bowl outs that you see down on Casino Center.
In our submitted site plan, we show that the choker's being eliminated. In, in the staff's report, they recommended denial.
It's the lang, if I may, the language is in Condition Number 6.
6, that's, that's, I was looking at Number 9, which talks about the landscaping.
I believe it's Condition Number 6, the latter part of the second sentence, where the staff recommendation is quoting from the Downtown Centennial Plan, and it discusses the, um, the, where the curb line is brought out at the intersections, as if you think on Fourth Street. How, as you go along Fourth, at the intersections, the sidewalk and the curb line is brought out to create the, the parking, the street parking, and to slow the traffic at the corners, and that's what this, the latter part of Sentence 2 in Condition Number 6 is referring to. The applicant is essentially requesting that that phrase, that latter part of Sentence 2, Condition 6, be removed.
Is this what I was gonna do?
Yeah. If, if I may, Chairman, um, if you can see this while I'm doing this, I think, I'm gonna give a, try to kind of draw in what they're talking about. Normally, you'd see at the intersections, something like this, by our standards. I've kind of over-exaggerated it a bit. You know, uh, thank you. Anyway, that is the intent of the Downtown Centennial Standards, is to have those streets come together, reducing the pedestrian crossing width, and that's what they're asking to reduce, because they are, uh, suggesting that their buses might have a difficult time making this maneuver here.
Actually, turning here, and then turning here.
And, what I would suggest, if I may, is that the condition remain as is at this time, or, um, and we just agree that if they can demonstrate through templates, because right now I don't have any bus-turning templates in front of me, but if they can demonstrate that they do, in fact, have a condition they cannot meet, either between now and City Council, or, that's almost as good as mine, but that works. Sorry about that. Um, between either now and City Council, they can demonstrate that, and then we can talk about eliminating that condition at City Council, or, um, you can modify the condition now, saying that if they do demonstrate it to the satisfaction of the traffic engineer or the planning director, that that condition can go away. But until they actually demonstrate that, I think that the condition is probably okay to stay. That's my opinion.
And if I may, as the staff report on Page 10 discusses, uh, First Street is the Arts Trail. That is the primary pedestrian length between the Arts District, uh, northward to Fremont Street. So, the widened sidewalks and the, the treatment at the intersection is an important part of the trail plan, um, throughout the downtown, and part of the reasoning why that condition is important, as Mister Anderson said, in the absence of some proof to us that that's physically impossible to be done at this location.
Would that be, would that be acceptable with you folks, if we just leave the condition in with the understanding that, I believe we're talking about an administrative review by the traffic engineer and the planning director, if they can agree that the, that the requirement is, simply doesn't work?
And we could do this prior to City Council?
Do it prior to City Council. Uh, it could be, that requirement would be deleted.
In essence, they can bring in their information, we'll review it, and, uh, then we'll consider whether or not the recommendation, um, would change. At this point in time, it remains the same.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, through you, um, well, I'm-
Let me, let me play a bureaucrat game here. Let me declare the public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter?
Thank you, Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Since this is a site development plan review, I would like these people to explain exactly how this thing is gonna work. Are all of the buses gonna be in the same place? Because this is what I thought this, the, the new thing was all about. Like Greyhound is supposed to be there, shuttle bus is supposed to be there, the whole works. If that is so, would they please, on this map, show us where the taxi cabs are gonna be, where the parking people are gonna be for the Greyhound? Go into the, the details on this, please.
Please.
As this site-
Let me, let me, let's, let's go ahead and let me finish. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and now allow the applicant to respond to that question.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. The, we do not intend to accommodate the, the charter service, the Greyhound service, or taxis at this site. Uh, what we do plan to do is accommodate the current RTC bus operations, which are being relocated from the existing Downtown Transportation Center to this site. The site does not have the same number of bays. In fact, it's almost half the number of bays that we currently have available at the Downtown Transportation Center, so we do need to retain the use of all those bays for our services.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite, uh, Commissioner Evans to-
Yes, I, um, just one comment. I'm, I'm absolutely fine with, uh, allowing you all to work with our staff and Public Works and Planning Director. Um, my, my thought is, it would be nice if that could occur prior to meetings like this, so that when we push the button, we'll know what we're getting. Um, I did have a couple of questions, though. I, there's some nice, uh, illustrations that have been provided, looks like a nice facility. But I had a question about the trees on the north, and conceptually, I'm wondering how many people, um, are there any projections of how many people will be waiting here for transfers, or will this be the terminus, or, um, is it like a transfer facility, or the, I, I'm, I'm not entirely clear. And, and I'm wondering about the shade aspects, the numbers of trees, and whether or not people will be waiting here if they can do so comfortably. And I guess the thought is, if we'd like more people to use our public transportation, I think we have to make it, you know, um, we have to make it friendly for them and hospitable. Can you address any of those concerns?
Sure. Uh, and you're absolutely right. It, it has all of those functions that you spoke about. Uh, it does accommodate transfers, and it is actually the start and end for some bus routes. In terms of, of, of what we were tasked with to develop, was to be the anchor component in that total five-block development downtown. So, as you can see from the illustration, uh, this will be a state-of-the-art bus terminal. Uh, it will be a lead silver rating when completed. Um, I think it will help to promote the development of the downtown. If you have any questions about its appearance, I'd be glad to address it. In terms of the shade, or shelters for the, the customers, uh, the site, all the, the bus platforms are provided with overhead canopies and, uh, shade.
Um, and one final question, um, and perhaps it's just that I'm not that bright, but can you tell me why we're moving from the existing location? Is it no longer suit our needs, or are the development plans for that?
Actually, this was in a, in response to, uh, the city's request, as they had other plans for the current Downtown Transportation Center site, as part of the redevelopment of downtown.
And does that leave the Greyhound bus station where it is, next to the Plaza, that whole transportation hub?
Uh, I can't address any of the, the agreements, the lease agreement that Greyhound has with the Plaza.
So, this is solely for the, of the RTC's bus system?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, uh, Casino Center, is that where you're going to have four buses be able to line up on the street?
Uh, correct, that is a touch and go for those coaches.
Tell me, on the two corners that are involved on Casino Center, it appears that there are chokers.
Correct.
Why are chokers okay there and not okay up above?
Because we don't intend to have coaches coming eastbound on Bonneville Avenue and turning south on Casino Center. They would be accommodated through-
Where, where are they gonna come from? Is Casino Center gonna be one-way?
The ultimate plan, which this reflects for the, the city's proposed couplet, would have Bonneville eastbound in this area.
Bonneville, eastbound on-
One-way, right. With the exception to this, this, uh, proposed turning movement, which would accommodate northbound lefts out of the site on the Bonneville.
Oh, I see. Well, I just, I mean, chokers are a new word for us tonight, it's kind of interesting, but suddenly I see what you're trying to do. On one part of it, it's okay, on the other part, it's not okay, and I'm not sure, we've been taught well enough tonight that it's okay at one place and not at another.
And, and they all have to do with the movement of the coaches, and how the coaches are making the transitions from First Street onto Bonneville, uh, and Garsis on the First Street.
Okay. I also saw that the terminal is two-story.
Correct.
Uh, what is, what is the second floor used for primarily?
Uh, office. It'd be transit administrative offices, RTC staff.
And that's the parking over there at the top left? Is that for the administrative staff?
Yes, but id- ideally, they would be using transit to get to the side.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask next. Yes. Are they coming in by bus or by car?
Ideally, they would all be coming in by bus. Or bike.
Are you-
We, I, I should mention, we do plan to accommodate a bike station in this facility, also for downtown.
As I saw the rendering, uh, it appears as though you, somebody's designed that, it appears that they're gonna use solar panels. Is, am I right or wrong?
No, that, that's not correct.
Not going to do it?
No, solar. We anticipate significant development in the downtown area, and concerned about investing in, in solar panels, and then having shadows cast upon our site.
Oh, shadows. Really?
Ideally.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more discussion on this item? Then I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make it.
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of Agenda Item Number 12, and it's my understanding we're leaving the, uh, stated conditions in, and that the applicant has agreed to work with, uh, the Public Works and the Planning Director prior to the City Council for some tweaking of that, or consideration for that, um, particular item for which they want some relief, is that correct? The chokers?
Right, to demonstrate the technical difficulty.
Okay. Then my motion would be for approval, following all the conditions as listed. And I thank you, gentlemen, for doing, you know, this in a sustainable way. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries?
Go forward, Council on August 6th.
Mister Sodden, you might oughta take a look at the fire truck turning radiuses through there, too. It might actually help your cause.
Will do.
I think they'll, they'll be more restrictive than your buses, so.
Thank you.
Items number 13, 14, 15, and 16 have been abayed, so we can go to Item Number 17, and related items 18, 19, and 20. Items 17 is general plan amendment 28312. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. Request is from rural to public facilities at the southeast corner of Marion Drive and Harris Avenue. 18 is zoning 28311, from, uh, RPD 2, uh, re, residential planning development, two units per acre, to, uh, CV, which is Civic. Item number 19 is waiver 28569, to allow Nettie Avenue to terminate in a dead-end street where a cul-de-sac is required, west of the intersection of Nettie Avenue and Marco Street. And Item Number 20 is a site development review for a city park. Staff report, please?
Uh, Mister Chairman, this park-
Mr. Chairman, this park will also serve as a trailhead as part of an important trail within the city of Las Vegas. Staff finds the general plan, the rezoning, the waiver, and the site plan to be in conformance to, to the general plan and goals of the city of Las Vegas and recommends approval.
Thank you.
And if approved, we do have a few items, housekeeping items on here. On item number 17, on general plan amendment 283112, we need to delete condition number one. And item number 18, zoning 28311, delete condition number one there also. And on item number 20, SDR 28313, revise condition number two to read all development shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, date stamped 6/1808, and building elevations, date stamped 5/2708, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open on behalf of the applicant. Sir?
Thank you. Michael Vlejevic, City of Las Vegas Public Works Department, and we've reviewed the conditions, and we're acknowledging and accepting the conditions. We're looking forward to completing this project. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on these items, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. It's a trailhead, a trailhead for a bike trail, or what's, what's the deal on that?
All right. Now, the city is developing a trail system throughout the city along the Las Vegas Wash. It's a multi-use trail. Bicycles, pedestrians, no horses on that trail, and no motorized vehicles on the trail.
And if I may just add, ultimately, we hope it'll be a regional trail system all along the Wash, through the county, the city, and North Las Vegas.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to speak on the item? Seeing now, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motions.
I'd like to ask a question, please. There, there appears to be very little onsite parking. So does that mean everybody's passing through basically on a trail basis, and you do not expect people to drive to this park to use the facility?
That's correct. This is really a pocket-type park for the neighborhood. It's only 3.85 acres, so there's really no demand for the parking. There's also four events that are special. It is right across the street from a Clark County school district that has a parking lot right across the street from us.
What is our policy relative to opening and/or closing of these parks today? What, what do we do about, in a general sense?
In the evening, as far as the park hours?
Yes, and in the morning.
Okay. Typically, the parks are closed between 10 and 11 o'clock in the evening. We close gates where we have drives. We do have vehicle gates that are closed. The marshals come by and close those gates in the morning. I believe that it's the parks maintenance that come around and open them up at 7 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If there's no discussion, prepare to make a motion.
Go ahead. There's seen no further discussions.
Motion for approval of agenda item number 17, GPA 2A312, with the deletion of condition number one.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries? Number 18?
Agenda item number 18, ZOIN 28311, motion for approval, again with the deletion of condition number one.
Motion's made. Please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries?
Agenda item number 19, the waiver, WVR 28569, motion for approval.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post?
I'm sorry, could you vote again?
And finally, condition, or agenda item number 20, the site development review, SDR 28313, following the recommendation of the staff, motion for approval with a revision of condition number two, as read into the record by our staff.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries?
All matters go forward to council on August 6th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 21 and companion item number 22. Item 21 is zoning 28325. The applicant is Washington Pecos LLC. The owner is Madre Mesa. It's from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial on the southeast corner of Washington Avenue and Pecos Road. Companion item 22 is to allow a 11, that's what, that's the way it's posted, 11.33-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 60 feet for proposed retail development. Item number, special use permit, item number 23 is, special use permit 28323 is for a beer, wine, cooler, off-sale establishment within a proposed convenience store. And item number 24 is site development review, 28320, for a 4,618-square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps, a 748-square-foot restaurant with drive-through, a 2,608-square-foot restaurant with drive-through, and a 9,449-square-foot retail building with a waiver to allow a six-foot, three-inch side yard landscape buffer where eight feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the request for rezoning, staff finds that compatible and in conformance to the general plan and is recommending approval. In regards to the variance, the special use permit and the site plan review, staff is recommending denial due to the variance and also due to onsite circulation issues. Staff notes that we did work with the applicant to try and resolve the issues in itself. There was a request to make some changes to the curb cuts on Pecos in order to allow better site access, and also there was initially a drive-through along the residential portion, or closer to the residential portion, and staff asked that be amended. The applicant did revise the elevations of the building. They did lessen the intensity of the variance, but once again, the site circulation on the site is problematic, and staff is recommending denial.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now and invite Speaker on behalf of the, the project to state her case.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Dave Crete, 320 South Jones, Las Vegas, Nevada, representing landowner as well as developers.
Thank you.
On the, the zone change, we are taking it from what was originally zoned to be condominium multifamily and making it R or C1 in accordance with the general plan. The project does consist of, as reviewed, an inline structure, which, if I can show on the overhead, is this area right here. We do have a convenience store gas station, which is located on the hard corner, and then we have two fast food tenants that would like to come in, one being a Checkers Hamburgers here, and then the other, a Pollo Comparo, which is a fast food chicken restaurant. The, the site will have, it does have the, or we will address, as staff has brought up, some of the issues as far as the onsite circulation. We'd like to go into that. But that is the zone change. On the, if you, if the chairman would like, we can go into the issues as far as residential adjacency. On the residential adjacency, we do have, I'll present another, another photograph. This is an aerial photo that delineates the property that's proposed to go under development as well as the adjacent residential use. The adjacent land that has the residential use, the eight neighboring lots for the condominiums have been left undeveloped since the inception of the project. However, we do have a letter from that property owner in support and endorsing the project, which I'd like to make part of the record tonight.
Give a, give a copy of it to the clerk, and it'll go as part of the official record. Thank you.
But Vivin's Construction is the owners of that property, and they do support the project that is proposed for you tonight.
Thank you.
The special use permit that's being proposed is for the 4,600-square-foot convenience store that's going to go on the corner. The proposed tenant that's there is going to be Circle K, and they would like to have and have requested for us to obtain a special use permit for the beer wine as part of their regular course of business within the convenience store. One of the issues that was brought up initially, and where we're, and as part of our request, is this does sit on 100-foot arterials, both on Washington and Pecos. It is noted, and it was noted in staff meetings, where there is a, a park across the street. However, with, within Title 30, it allowed for us to, to put in, for that special use permit next to a park with that 100-foot separation of the arterial. That is what is being requested for there. On the variance that was addressed, as far as the, the eight-foot landscape buffer, it was reduced to, I believe, just under seven foot, six foot, eight inches. That was also to accommodate a five-foot walkway that runs along there, so the actual distance between property line and building will be over 10 feet, in fact, nearly 12 feet. But the intensity of landscape that is being provided is the same intensity of landscape that's, that would be provided under the normal eight-foot. In fact, we've tried to go over on the trees and the vegetation to go through there to make sure that it is as aesthetically pleasing to the neighboring property as possible.
So does that mean that the waiver is no longer required there?
No, it is required because the, the landscape, the landscape easement that's there is actually reduced, and it was reduced as part of the way that we could accommodate the five-foot walkway to go along. If you'll notice, where's the board with the loading zones? One of the loading zones in the property, which was something that we addressed, that staff did comment on, we had three loading zones. We now have the fourth. The, the loading zone, and the reason for the sidewalk, is the back doors here, there's a loading zone that easily accommodates the back of the building, so that they can come up and load from, from the back end here. That's, this is the five-foot walkway. You can see from the artist's rendering that there is an intensive landscape buffer along the residential area.
Come back to that later.
As far as traffic goes, I would also like to submit to the record, we, we have worked, and staff did note, and we would continue to work to the success of the project with staff to handle any of their other questions. But as part of the record, we have, I'm sorry? Oh. Mr. Gropenbacher from City Staff and Traffic. We did have a meeting with city staff once we did our submission, and their concerns were, and I can illustrate this, let me find my sheet that I've already seem to have lost.
Mr. Crete, can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yes, sir.
I, I think, probably I speak for some of us up here. One of my main concerns is the site access. Maybe you can focus on some of that?
Yes, sir, that's where I'm going.
That would be helpful.
Just so you can see what was previously proposed, and what we did change from and to in our meeting with staff, is the issue with traffic was the fact that we had put two curb cuts, two ingress egress points, that were too close to one another. It is a desire of the, of the developer, the property, to have two access points and yet maintain the safety that, that traffic requires. We did make that change. We did pull the one entrance into the south end. Staff has also stated that as a condition, if approved, that they will want us to do is to extend the median, to do a spot improvement inside Pecos, so that there can be no left-hand turn access into the northernmost entry point on Pecos, which we have told staff absolutely we'd agreed to do. The only left-hand turn entrance will be at the southernmost point onto the property. We have spaced this out as they had requested. In doing so, and in our meetings with them, and I, and I'd like to note, as, as staff has reminded me, that staff doesn't tell us where to put our buildings, and we do note that, but in those conversations, it was if we moved the southernmost access point on Pecos down, as we have, that it was going to push the, the old, the building up. If you look at the old one, you could see how the building was at the southern end of the property. One of the other things that that addressed and, and improved upon was there was going to be a driveway right next to the residential use, which now there isn't. As for the, the site circulation, that staff has addressed as a concern, the users here, the first, the southernmost fast food pad is a company called Pollo Comparo, which will be new to Las Vegas. They're in four states and 15 countries. They're a substantial company, and they are different than most fast food franchises, fast food companies, because only about 30% of their business is used through drive-through, where if you went to a Jack in the Box, it's 70%. So we won't have the same amount of use onsite as, as the other. The other is Checkers Hamburgers is a double drive-through, to give you a visual, more of a Rowley's, Sonic Hamburgers, where they have the drive-through. This doesn't have any of the parking. It is specifically drive-through. There is no dining provided. The second, if you will, the southern drive-through access is actually a secondary access that they only use when they get busy. As you can imagine, Commissioners, the, the ease of use for a driver on doing fast food would be to where the fast food hamburger was served to you through your driver's window. On Checkers, they provide for a second. It also, a second drive-through, and it's hand-through through the passenger side. The other thing in speaking with staff, when we met with them, that was a positive to this approach, was the, the through access points for this here, and I just blew this up, it, it doesn't show, but we can show on the other site plans. This is where the retail is, is to the east of the fast food restaurants. This is where the traffic flows north-south, and this is as well in order to get to the restaurants. Having that second drive-through will reduce the opportunity of cars stacking for, for the drive-through to actually block traffic that wants to get around the site. So the, the, the real use of these, there's the northern one on Checkers, will be the primary. Pollo Comparo, which is the southern fast food pad, does not have the same traffic as a normal fast food. And the one that I highlighted in yellow is the secondary one, and it has very minimal use. But it is part of Checkers' branding and marketing that is a double drive-through. They're the largest in the country, as they like to market as the largest double drive-through fast food restaurant. With that, I'd love to answer questions.
Thank you. Anybody else in attendance wish to speak on this, items, these items?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I see two problems that, that I'd like to have them addressed. Number one, if you remember some years ago, go back maybe 10 years, Councilman Reese did not want these little panhandle things in there. I don't know, I don't see it on, on here, but there's a little panhandle thing, and I would like to ask the applicant, is that going to be restricted to, to employee parking only, or, or is this open to everyone? Because Metro had all kinds of drug dealings and stuff in, in these little back pockets there. The second problem I see is in the back of the, of the string of the buildings. The way I understand it is that the fire marshal requires five feet of unrestricted access. If they're going to use this as a loading area back there, there's going to be crates and stuff, whatever, stacked back there, and the fire department's going to have a real problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing now, I'll declare the public hearing closed and allow the applicant to respond to those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the panhandle parking area that is addressed by the citizen, this is intended to be for employee parking. The retail user, the users, if you will, of the retail spaces, as far as the customers, will be parking up front. The, the panhandle area isn't, I don't know if we can actually designate it as employee only, but it is intended to be employee parking, because it's the most inconvenient parking for a customer. The issue of the fire depth of five feet clear by the fire department, we have over 10. There is a five-foot access way. We don't envision there being any barriers that will come through, and all of the trash facilities and things like that, where people will throw stuff away, are out in front of the buildings. So I don't, I don't believe that there's anything that, that will, that will be obstructing. We have over 10 feet there. Questions, please?
And then, then of course, the fire department will have to inspect the drawing, so that the concerns will be addressed. Thank you. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the, declare the public hearing closed, turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible questions. I have two, just for clarification. On item number 22, which is the variance, I believe that the residential adjacency setback in the published document is 11.33-foot, but you've made modifications where now it's 35 feet where 69 is required. So it's less than what it was published.
Correct, sir.
Okay. And the other that, that you started talking about something else, I didn't know what my question was, could you show me on your map there where the waiver to allow a six-foot, three-inch-wide side yard setback buffer where eight feet is required? wide side yard setback buffer where eight feet is required is addressed? I asked the question, you answered regarding something else, I believe. Where is the six-foot, three-inch side yard where you're required to have eight?
Just on this side now.
It was addressed right here.
Okay, my mistake. There was originally also that same issue on the backside of the building, which is where the five feet was added. It is also along the southern property line, next to the residential area there between there and the restaurant.
What is immediately north of that? Is that where the church is?
No, it's more condominiums. One of the things that staff has asked us, which we did agree to do though as well, is that with permits, that we would increase that to eight feet.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? David, you have some? Chair recognizes Commissioner Steinman.
Thank you. I have difficulty believing the fire department is going to approve a building that basically sits on the property line, and they have no access for their equipment behind the building. Especially if you put a restaurant or something in one of those retail spots back there, the online spaces. I guess it'd have to be totally sprinkled.
Yes, sir.
It's going to have to be. But, I can't see delivery people parking in the so-called panhandle and schlepping their goods all the way down a five-foot walkway that's probably been rattled with all kinds of debris back there, and people throw out the back door and try to get, I think what they're going to do in reality is going to park in front.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and they shouldn't be doing that, because that's where the customers park. That's really what goes on. Now, the three spaces to the north in that online space have eight parking spaces. That's all they have, if you count them, in the north end. They have no other access to closed parking other than those eight spaces right there. Now, there are two spaces in that little nook, you see right there? I'm not sure that works very well with people backing in and backing out, coming together. I'm not sure that's the right thing to do. I'm surprised you didn't put a trice thing in there, but it's too close to the residential, I think, to do that.
Yes, sir.
The other thing I'd like to ask you is, from the handicap spaces by the inline spaces, or space, there is a trail for the handicapped person to go across the island and over to Checkers. Now, why did you design it that way when you already have a handicap space over there on Pecos that has only one little navigation across the parking area to get to? That seems very dangerous, and I'd like you to reconsider that, because you seem to have enough handicap parking. The real crux of the issues here, though, relate to three drive-through islands coming out together. And, you say, "Well, Checkers only uses it when they're busy." Well, then that makes it even worse, because now we have three of them working at very high times. And, I also find it very difficult, and I know who Checkers are, I've seen them many, many times in the east, but a person who's alone, reaching across the front seat in bucket seats to get goods through a window on the other side while the car is in gear, I can't imagine what the results are going to be of something like that. I just don't understand how you serve somebody who's in the driver's seat on the other side of the car. And, I think it's a very dangerous situation, but even more than that, it's a real mess when it comes to circulation. Because, right near there is the circulation mess that occurs with the fuel pumps and the C-store. All of this comes together in one place at that second entrance off of Pecos. And, I don't know how you redesign it, but if there was only one drive-through at rallies, at Checkers, it would help slightly. But, I think trying to throw three out there is just, it's going to be death at the busy times. It's not going to be pretty at all. And, I don't know how anybody who's parking across from those drive-throughs and those restaurants along Pecos can ever get across, with all those people pulling out of those drive-throughs and trying to scatter at that point, and people trying to cross that driveway to get over to the Mexican restaurant, probably. Now, I do think Checkers has provided for a sit-down area. Am I right?
Correct, there is an outdoor patio area.
Okay, so, those people that do that have to park across the way, either east or west, and traverse across these busy ways to get over to that little sit-down area. Am I correct?
Correct.
I just think you've got too many movements on this site, and I don't know how you solve it if you intend upon having these tenants. It's making it very, very difficult. And, my issues with a five-foot sidewalk behind the building is not as great as my issues with these three pouring out, but I'll let the other commissioners see what they have to say on that.
Mr. Chairman, I share Commissioner Steinman's concerns. As much as I want to see development down there, and I think this is a ripe place for development, and it would serve that community, I'm concerned about the safety issues of the site circulation. And, I don't know how to address that. I was telling someone earlier, today I happened to go by a gas station convenience store slash McDonald's at the corner of a busy intersection near where I live, and there were, the gas bays were all queued up, the parking lot was full, and the drive-through for the McDonald's was backed up into the gas pump parking area and the convenience store parking area. And, I just sat there in the middle of the afternoon, and I couldn't move, I was blocked in by every direction, and I just kind of closed my eyes and thought, "Please don't someone hit me," because it was a prescription for failure right there. And then, you have the access from the main streets. And, I thought, "Wow," and this happened to be in the county, but I thought, "You know, we make mistakes when we approve these things, when we don't look at the consequences, and there are public safety issues." I'm not an expert, but I think we have to rely on our staff, who I believe are. And, it's hard to see what these things look like on paper, and then they actually get built, and you think, "Wow, we really missed the boat somewhere." And, quite frankly, you know, I think public safety should be one of the biggest issues that we look at. Our staff is saying there are circulation issues within this site. From what I can gather, we have two relatively small fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, and one of them has drive-throughs on both sides. And then, there's a 4,000 some odd, 4,600 and some odd square foot circle K convenience store. And then, from what I can see, we've got about a 9,000-foot retail center, right?
Correct.
And then, we also have gas pumps. Does it indicate how many bays for the gas pumps?
There's eight pumps.
And, they're telling us that there's site circulation issues, and I guess what I'm looking for is some degree of comfort before I push that green button for yes, or something that would keep me from pushing the red button that says that this site is overbuilt, which is what our staff is telling us. Either that, or either it's overbuilt, or somehow the design doesn't work. And, perhaps our staff, Mr. Anderson, or our planning staff can address some of this, because I don't want to be proving things that are going to put the public in a situation where they're going to get in a wreck and get hurt. So, that's my concern.
Anybody else have any concerns they want to vocalize? I'll tell you what my concerns are. Regards to the request for zoning, that is, has staff support, and I would support that, too. When we go to the variance regarding the setbacks, the adjustments that's made to the building, make that fairly tolerable. You know, we go to the special use permit regarding the beer wine coolers off sale, you know, you point out that there's a 100-foot street there between you and the new swimming pool that's there that's having 3,000 to 5,000 kids a week go in that facility, but the rules are what they are. If you've got a 100-foot street, that eliminates that prohibition. Don't like it, but really and truthfully can't deny you use of the property. But, I do share some of the concerns about the onsite traffic circulation, and that probably remains to be my primary concern. I think you've done what you can at the microphone here this evening, and perhaps with discussions with staff before, to mitigate as much of those as you can. But, I think that it needs to come out a little clearer before I could really get too enthusiastic behind supporting it, because the things that they bring out about the three exit lanes for the fast food restaurants, which will be tremendously popular in that area, and they will generate a lot of traffic. And, an eight-lane, or eight-station gas pump will be tremendously popular. And, Washington is getting busier and busier, and Pecos currently is very busy. And, as that park develops more and more patronage, that's going to be a pretty heavily utilized intersection. The businesses that go onto this parcel are going to be financially very successful. And so, you've got a good project going, but at some point in time, you can let success kill you. And, we might be heading that particular direction unless we give you the opportunity to really take a second look at the onsite circulation. I think you'd be serving yourself well by making sure that people can get in and out of there safely. You know, that's all you need, is about two or three little fender benders on property every day, and people are going to say, "Boy, we've done something wrong here, I don't really want to locate my business here any longer." And, I think that's what you're doing to yourself. So, it's just about there, but it does need a little fine tuning.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing that you may not have the votes for approval here this evening. Would that be something that you'd be willing to relook at and try to fine tune and design it where there's a greater level of comfort?
If I may, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, suggest that if we could go forward with the approvals, with the exception possibly of the site development, if that would be acceptable, so that we could revisit with staff in order to try to improve our circulation, and go over with staff everything that'll be going on in the property and how we can work with them, because obviously the goal here is to make it work for everybody. And, not here to beat anybody's head, or frustrate myself or my clients that are here with us this evening. Maybe we could hold that for the next meeting and give us the opportunity to work with staff to improve circulation.
I think the problem is that the variance and the special use relate to the site development. They all tie. The zoning doesn't necessarily tie directly to this site plan, but those three tie together.
Okay.
Pretty much.
The big one's the zoning. I'm not a large fan of just doing a blanket zone changer. I like it tied to a site plan, because then we have teeth. And so, it sounds like maybe we need to hold this, and you visit with your architect and your engineer. So, I would pose a motion to hold this, and I think you and I discussed this, you need 45 days.
Well, we need 30 to 45 days. Definitely 30 days, because we cannot get it done within that timeframe. You cannot go to two weeks at this point.
Okay.
And if I may, just so that while everybody's gathered here, there's been a great deal of work, as I think that you've heard, with the applicant has done a great deal of work to try to make this work, and both the planning and public work staff have gone along with it. I just want to say that it is staff's opinion that to make this work will more than likely require a reduction in square footage.
Right.
To fit all of these uses on this lot in this shape with all these drive-throughs, I don't know how many different ways you can try to stuff the package with all of this. So, just so that we're clear, and that the planning commission is not disappointed, we hope, that it is staff's position that it will probably take a reduction in square footage to make this project fit on this lot.
And, I just, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, because I agree with all my fellow commissioners, but when you have a park and a pool like that across the street, I'm thinking about all the kids that are going to be running over there to get their hamburgers, or to get their fast food, and you're going to have so much traffic coming in and out that, you know, we have to think about the safety of the children, and you won't be gaining my support on this project as well.
We're ready for a motion, I believe?
I'll make a motion for it. I'll make a motion on items 21, 22, 23, and 24, to obey them for, to the, is it August 14th, 2018.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post?
Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Dunham, thank you.
Thank you, we'll hear it again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with staff.
Sure, thank you. Okay, we now move to item number 25. Variance 28322, the applicant owner is Schneppel Family, L.O.P., to allow 359 parking spaces where 380 spaces are required for proposed 234 unit condominium development at the northeast corner of Centennial Parkway and Shamber Road. Companion item number 26 is site development review, 28324, is for a 324-unit, three-story condominium development with waivers to allow a six-foot perimeter landscape buffer where 10-foot is required, 43,180 square feet of open space where 44,195 square feet was approved, a zero-foot upper floor setback from parking where 2 feet is required, and zero parking lot landscape islands where 10 are required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the variance and the numerous waiver requests associated with the proposed site development plan review indicate that the site is being overbuilt, therefore staff is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now, and asking anyone wishes to speak, please come forward. On behalf of the applicant, we have?
Mark Bangen, 6765 West Russell Road. The waivers that we have in front of you, they are numerous, obviously, but the main ones that precipitated these other waiver requests were due to the topography on the site. As we went out to start to grade it, we realized that there was a little bit more fall across the site than what we had originally anticipated. With that being said, what we were required to do was to reduce or eliminate the parking spaces along one side of each of these buildings, which as you can see, the buildings are somewhat large. But, in doing that, we ended up losing about 26 parking spaces. What we did then was we met with Commissioner Ross to see if he would even entertain the idea of supporting that type of waiver request, and, you know, obviously, no way. So, what we did was we looked at other ways that we could do to reduce the number that we're requiring, or reducing, how do you say that? To reduce the amount that we're requiring to reduce the parking by, if that makes sense. So, what we did was we looked at getting rid of the finger islands in these clouded areas, which as staff has pointed out, were 10. We also looked at reducing, to go down to a smaller depth parking space, so that we have the compact parking stalls. And by doing those two things, we were able to reduce that number from 26 down to 7. So, we feel that we've hit the best case, so that we can still build the project and have the least amount of parking reduction for this project, okay? As far as the waivers for the landscape strip along the east side of the property, we had always proposed a six-foot perimeter landscaping strip along that property, along that edge. When we came in for the parking reduction and the major modification plan, that was when it was brought up to our attention that it was required to have 10, and it was overseen or overlooked by staff, and obviously, we missed it also. So, we're asking for that to be reduced from 10 to 6. And then, also, there was a setback issue for a residential unit to a parking space, which was also overlooked at the beginning by us and also staff. But, let me just remind you that that residential unit is on the second floor. It doesn't state in the code, in the cliff's edge code, that it's only for ground units or for second-floor units. It just stays- It just states that you have to be two feet away. This is a second-story unit, so it won't even, you don't have an access directly out to that parking stall pedestrian-wise. And I believe that that's been brought up on another project recently by, I believe, Polte Homes, where they had a similar situation, and that was also approved. With those, I'm here to answer any other questions that you or any of the people in the audience would have.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing now the public hearing closed, and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion?
Commissioners, if I may, just in your orange package, your package that begins with the orange sheet, the last three sheets are supplemental information, comparison of the originally approved project with the project that's before you now. Is that correct?
Actually, it's the required per Cliff's Edge or Providence, the previously approved site development review, and the proposed site development plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing's been opened and closed. Ready for you guys to...
Well, I'll throw something out there. I don't know how I feel about this, to tell you the truth. Maybe you can back up and take me through it. It went through the system, and there were approvals for various designs, and now, for whatever reasons, you're seeking modifications or amendments to what was previously approved. In general, I really dislike the idea of the elimination of the landscape islands. I think that's contrary to everything that we're trying to do. And I'm assuming that your reduction from the 4,380 square feet of open space where 4,495 was required is so that you can better utilize the site, or, I mean, it almost sounds like this was approved, and then did it not work out? I don't quite understand.
Actually, I'm not sure where that portion came from, because we did provide revised plans to the city that showed that we did meet the 44,185, I believe.
195.
195. So I'm not sure where that statement came in. In our original plan that we'd submitted, I believe that it was mislabeled, and we showed that it was 43,180 or something like that. But after it was brought to our attention, we went back and looked at the site, made sure that we met the square footage that we had originally provided, and we still have that. So that's not really a waiver.
You really don't need the waiver, then?
Not for that one, no, sir.
Okay. But is the purpose of the elimination of the landscape islands so you can achieve more parking?
Yes.
And is it, I think your statement in the backup is that it went through some sort of an administrative process with Cliff's Edge, and they found it to be sufficient?
Yes. Everything that goes through, as you're aware, everything that goes through in this master plan has to be approved by Cliff's Edge, by Focus First. We have to have that letter to back up everything that we do out there.
Okay. And, you know, my fellow commissioners often don't agree with me on this, but I sometimes think that, you know, it's requiring, you want 359 parking spaces where 380 are required for a condominium development that has 234 units. And in my mind, what you're providing is sufficient. It doesn't meet our code, but I'm always perplexed that we almost encourage people to have more than one car or multiple cars in developments. I'm perplexed that, I know that the code is set up and someone decided on the formula, but, you know, I look at every major city in this country, and I'm not sure all of them require one and a half stalls or two per unit. In many cases, they provide one. Although, I guess one would argue that Cliff's Edge is not a real urban environment, so I'd be curious what my fellow commissioners have to say.
If I could just have one point of clarification, I believe the required parking for this is 369. I don't know why it was written up as 380. If you go to the table, it shows that the required, the base parking requirement is 369. We're providing 362. So we're asking for seven parking spaces reduced, but also the landscape fingers.
Okay. But the landscape fingers are what I really have an issue with.
Yeah, I know. And we could put those in.
I'd rather see empty parking spaces. I mean, I go to these places, and I see lots and lots of empty parking spaces, but the reality is, you go from the parking space to the building, and it's like a barren wasteland, and because of the asphalt and the heat islands, we have this incredible heat, and we're changing the environment here. We've got to address the permeable surfaces and the heat effects of our building, and the landscape fingers are an integral part of it. So I would rather have fewer parking spaces and more landscape fingers, and if it's sufficient parking, I'm okay with that. Unfortunately, you know, I don't write the code, so, thank you.
And that is an option, if that's somewhere that you want to go.
I haven't agreed with the commissioner. I haven't agreed. You know, in this hot weather that we've had, anyplace you go and there's trees in the parking lot, you're hunting. You're working on finding it. And I think we're all getting that way, and we're beginning to see more projects with it compared to the old projects that were built years ago. And so I strongly concur with what you said. I am not one that has to have 369 on the dot. I would rather see 350 and have some fingers in there and try to do something right in an environmental way and also protecting our people from the sunshine. So I concur with him on that point. And I think this is a good project. This project is, I don't think there's many bus lines going to go by this project right away, but I also think that people are probably going to start thinking about two cars and maybe not go that direction as much as we've been used to in the good old days. So I'm not having concerns about cutting back some parking spaces at all, and I would support that.
If I may ask staff, is the variance for 362 where 369 is required? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there is only, right, the variance that's being requested was noticed for a 21-space variance, and there is actually only a seven-space variance that is required based upon the plans submitted. Therefore, I don't, that certainly wouldn't give you all of the landscape fingers, but it would allow the applicant to provide some of them.
So we could go down to a 21-space reduction and just put landscape fingers wherever we have, or need to at least, up to that point? Yeah, at least what's required, and if possibly more. I mean, it sounds like, because to me, it would seem like if we're required for 10, you're roughly one space per landscape finger, you'd lose 10 more spaces, but, you know, we might actually have more.
Any further discussion?
So can we move forward with an approval with the understanding that that revision, maybe Director Wheeler can be looked at?
Let me confirm here, if I may. So the variance number 25, we would add the condition that the approval is for 362 spaces where 369 are required.
Correct.
Thank you. And then on the SDR, if I understand that correctly, there is, based on the provision of the 44,195 square feet, there's no waiver of the open space required. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that waiver goes away, and then there, it has been noticed where zero parking lot landscape islands where 10 are required. There would be X number provided, and the applicant would merely provide us a revised landscape plan in the future that would essentially fill in the difference of about 20 spaces that could be allocated for some number of landscape islands.
Okay, but would we be required to maintain 362 spaces?
Couldn't.
Yes. That's all we've got, and that's what you would be getting approval for at this point in time.
Okay, if we did that, I believe if we put in the 21 spaces, we'd be down to about 342.
341, exactly.
341, right.
Yeah.
So can that be done, or what do we have to do?
The, if I may, and I'll just, I won't ask the city attorney for an opinion, I'll just have him correct me if I'm wrong. That they have, would have noticed a variance of 21 spaces. Were the commission to grant that variance of 21 spaces, then they would have the opportunity to fill in the rest with the landscaping, because they'd be granted the variance that's before you this evening.
Right. Yes, Chairman, if I may. Yeah, with regard, we're really talking about an open meeting law question now, and whether or not you can grant more space variance than was submitted to the public.
The 21 is what's here.
Yeah, 21's what's here. So 21's okay.
They would be going to 21, right.
If the applicant's asking for 30, the answer would be no.
Correct.
Without going back through the process, but 21 would be acceptable. Okay. So Ms. Wheeler, maybe you can help craft a motion. I'm at that point where I'm certainly comfortable with this.
Item 22, we would add a condition that approval shall be for a maximum 21-space parking variance.
So item 22, okay.
25. 25.
I've got a quick question. Mark, is it your birthday? Because if it isn't, it's definitely Christmas in July.
It's the first, I'll tell you that.
Well, my motion would be for approval of agenda item number 25 with the representations as read into the record by Director Wheeler. Does that work?
That's what I read. What I read is that the condition will read that the approval is hereby granted for a 21-space parking variance.
Motion for approval.
So that brings us down to a total of parking spaces required as 341. Or no, I'm sorry. No, that's right.
It's 21 less than what is the 369 required.
Right.
And that's not going to give you adequate space to replace all 10.
You can't replace all 10.
Right. It's going to be some number less. So I think we'll have to address that.
348.
348.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry, I missed.
Have to address that in the motion on 26.
362, okay.
Well, my motion on agenda item number 26, and again, Director Wheeler, maybe you can help me with the language. Did we post?
No, Commissioner Quinn, could you vote, please?
Okay, we've got the motion on number 25. It's been for approval.
I'm sorry, I was still thinking.
Reduction in 21 parking spaces. Motion's made. Post? Motion carries.
Mm-hmm.
Now we go to number 26.
And on 26, the site development review, and again, if you could help me out here, I think the gist of it, we understand, but we need some length.
We would add, if I may, Chairman and Vice Chair, we would add a condition that no open space waiver is approved by this action, and an additional condition that a revised landscape plan showing the provision of landscape islands shall be provided to staff for review prior to the city council hearing.
That would be my motion.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries.
And that goes to council, August 6.
And just for point of discussion for future, maybe for some future discussion, in our code, where it addresses the parking requirements on projects like these, given this as an example, wouldn't it mean that everybody in every condo unit would have to be home 24 hours a day and each have a guest or a second car or half of a car in order to basically fill up the parking lot? I'm kind of perplexed, and I could be wrong, but I'm wondering if at some point in the future, you know, given the way we're building, if that's something we would want to revisit, or is it the opinion of my colleagues and the big shot decision-makers that the code as it exists is sufficient? Something for future discussion.
If I may, I could just very briefly say, as we indicated at the recent planning commission workshop, Flynn went over with you that he's working on the form-based code, and we anticipate a significant number of code changes will be brought before the commission within the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good night.
We now move to item number 27, special use permit 28-216, the applicant is Wet Paint Media, LLC. The owner is Huntred Shopping Center, LLC, for proposed 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign billboard on the south side of Charleston Boulevard, west of Maryland Parkway. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the proposed use does not meet the objective 2.24 of the 2020 master plan, which indicates that the city should seek in mature neighborhoods, high-quality redevelopment and preservation. Staff finds this use to undermine that and is hereby recommending denial of the use.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now and invite anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter to please approach the microphone and give your name on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Michael Cordero, 5521 Magi Ranch. This is the location that our application had submitted to the county or the city, and it seems to meet all of the criteria that the code has been written by. We meet all the separations from NER zone. We meet all the setbacks, front-side setbacks. We meet the code by separation from other outdoor advertising structures. It is clearly in the business corridor area, so we feel like this is an appropriate application for this particular area. The part that staff was talking about, that it's kind of like a rebuildable area or something like that, that portion is not part of the code, so that's why we selected this location, because it did meet all of the, all criteria of the code. And we're far enough away from any residential, so we felt that this was an appropriate location based on the code.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name's Mario J. Pollak. I reside in the city of Las Vegas. Just briefly, if you see the sign at the time, and you'll see the graffiti I painted over there on several different occasions, it's part of an ongoing problem. But I'm here today to oppose this motion or this application here and to give you the reasons for doing that. The homeless, vagrants, and street criminals meet daily on the Huntred Shopping Center property to plan their criminal activity for the rest of the day and coming night. These crimes include arson, vandalism, and burglary while on the Huntred Shopping Center property. They urinate and defecate in public, vomit loiter, illegally purchase and consume alcohol, and illegal drugs in the litter. They also pamhandle and misuse the bus stop on the southwest corner of East Charleston and South Maryland Parkway. Let's see. When Wet Paint Media, LLC, can show that they can manage the business and facilities presently located at the Huntred Shopping Center in a safe, sanitary, and crime-free manner, we, the people of the Huntred Circle Park community, will consider their request for a special use permit for proposed 14 by 48 off-premise sign, and all future requests requiring approval of the community as expressed through our elected representatives. I would direct the commission here that we have violations on a daily basis of NRS 207.030G, that's loitering, 207.200 trespass, municipal code 10.76.010, that relates to the purchase and consumption of alcohol within 1,000 feet of a license. There's three licenses, two licenses on that property, and two gaming licenses also. And I would like you to take note of the calls to Metro from July 1st to July 10th to get an idea of the problem that we're discussing here. You can check with Officer Tom Pennington at the Downtown Area Command. His number is 828-1553, and he will direct you to the number of calls that we've made in the neighborhood. in regard to the problems I've already expressed. You can check with Donna Houston of the Southern Nevada Health District and reference complaint SW08-1159 concerning the human waste on the property, and her number is 759-0549. You can also check with Scott Robinson of the Gaming Control Board, his number is 486-2020 about the purchase of alcoholic beverages at the Circle K and playing of slot machines by people intoxicated in violation of gaming rule number five. I personally witnessed a clerk at the Circle K sell liquor to an intoxicated person who had just run off the bus stop by Metro Police. There's also problems with trailers that are used for construction, they're unlicensed trailers that are used for construction, the homeless use these trailers for purchase to conduct their illegal activities, and I've talked with the business owners there, and they seem to think that every Thursday, there's a group of people gathered there in front of their businesses to receive paychecks for some type of construction project that's going on with the, with the property owners there. Now, I just got one more little thing I'd like to add, and I'll be, I'll be done. If they can provide 24/7 security on the site, either a person there, a body there, or a mobile unit that will address.
Is the intent of that to protect the sign?
It's to protect the community.
Okay.
If they would provide security on the site, a mobile unit or an onsite person that would work with Metro to eliminate the crimes and the violations and the statutes I listed, we would be more than happy to cooperate with them on this project or anything else in the future, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioners, this is my stomping ground. When I first came here, I lived at the Garden of All Apartments on 13th Street, white walls, crystal chandeliers, and purple carpets. Beautiful. Commissioners, the thing is, what we're talking about here is the landmark Hunt Ridge Theater and the sign there. This billboard will block that sign. At some point in, coming down the line, that building, this area will be redone, but that Hunt Ridge Theater, it's a landmark, it's one of our, what do they call it, registered places, or whatever that, and it needs to be preserved. And also, I think that the city still got some money into that thing when that roof was redone and that, but still, it goes down to the fact that this billboard would block the landmark building that brings, that gives it its, its, its.
Character.
Character, thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed, and let the applicant respond to those observations.
Thank you. I've personally been to the site many, many times, and, you know, not to start any kind of argument or anything, but I've personally not seen anybody loitering, drinking beer, or urinating, maybe writing graffiti or something on there, but we're talking about the application as a billboard sign. It's 36 inches in diameter of the column, it's 40 feet overall height. I don't see how we could be responsible, we don't own the property, we could be responsible for security on the property. It's a billboard, nothing more than a billboard. As far as the gentleman's talking about blocking the Hunt Ridge sign, I don't believe that it'd block the Hunt Ridge sign. I know where the theater's at, it's a little more to the east, there are businesses in between that, there's a number of palm trees along Charleston that would probably block the sign, but this billboard is far enough even away from that theater, and I do understand that, I don't believe it'll block anything, because that's not the type of business that we're in.
Thank you. Public hearing's now closed, I'd like to turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible action, I'll give first shot at the question. Is this in place of the sign that's there currently that advertises the tavern that has the little star on top of it, or is this in addition to?
No, sir, if you could, if you look on the photo that's in front of me right now, you'll see the water business, it's blue, the tavern sign is a little bit more to the west, the sign that we're proposing to construct on this property is right near that water side, so it's still quite a distance away from the tavern sign, and it would be over it, because it's a 40-foot overall per the code that allows us to build. It wouldn't even obstruct that sign on the property.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a comment for the first protester. I feel your pain for what's going on in that area. I too have complained many, 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 many times, but what it takes is these people like you to do that, and you need to become on a first-name basis with a code compliance officer, and when you call in a complaint to the city of Las Vegas, document it and ask for them to get back to you, and it will, things will not change overnight, but things will change, and all it takes is one person like yourself to keep on top of those issues and let that code compliance officer know that you're looking after them. And honestly, the code compliance officers are great people, because they want the community to be kept up just like you do. And even though our purview tonight is for a sign, it really has nothing to do with your complaints, I know that your complaints are real and valid, so I don't want to discourage you at all from not being the citizen that you are and noting the problems with this area. And again, get on a first-name basis with the code compliance officer, I did, and it worked. It took time, and in fact, it took about 18 months for something to get done, but it finally got done, and it was frustrating at first, because I thought, wow, I, because I'm in the system, things will happen faster, and if anything, it happened slower, but it did happen. So, but I want you to know that what we're talking about tonight is a sign, and not the complaints that you have brought forward, but we are listening to your complaints.
And that is good and valid information.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I have some conflicting views on this, because generally speaking, I'm not, I don't have as much heartburn as some of my colleagues here about billboards providing their, not entirely visible from residential areas, and that they don't obstruct the views of, say, Red Rock or something of that nature. Mr. Farlow's comments, I hadn't really considered in terms of blocking the historic architecture of the Hunt Ridge, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. That too is in a fairly fragile state right now, and what is going to happen there is anybody's guess, there's certainly high hopes, but, you know, it's a problem. That center, I think, is a real missed opportunity, it's got that whole retro thing going, the tavern is, the last time I was there was, seemed to be pretty successful with a local clientele. The drugstore, it has a lunch counter in there, I think it's open again, but they don't seem to have the traffic that I wish. And the Savers was, when I was young, a Mayfair market, and that was a real viable, attractive shopping center. Sometimes I think the revenue from a billboard allows the property owners to provide maintenance and the 24-hour security, or better, security. On the other hand, the other view is that, you know, that it, a property owner is then dependent on that revenue and doesn't do anything, there's no incentive to, to bring up the character of the center. So I don't know, I'm kind of in the middle of the road, and as my friend likes to say, the only thing in the middle of the road is a yellow line and dead armadillos, so I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, I'm perplexed by the whole notion, but I'm concerned that once we grant this, we can't regulate the content of a billboard, and it's entirely up to the property owner, and I'm afraid that it's the, you know, the revenue is to the highest bidder, so I, as the gentleman who spoke earlier talked about a lot of the problems there, I don't think the billboard is going to be a solution or a deterrent one way or another. Those are problems much bigger than a billboard or anything that we can do, but I'm curious about how my colleagues feel about this. I, again, I'm not entirely opposed to billboards, I think the industry keeps shooting itself in the foot by not maintaining them or building billboards that are attractive and interesting and eye appealing, so I'm curious of what my colleagues say.
If I can add one remark.
You'd have to ask the chairman.
Is that possible?
If you can, please, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be brief about this. The gentleman's concerned about security on the property, and so am I, you know, I'd like to see everyone be safe as well. What Wet Paint Media can propose, and, I mean, we're not security guards, but we can't propose to put some lighting underneath the skirting of the billboard, so that it would keep some of the area lit up a little bit more, and possibly that lighting would, you know, stop or deter.
I don't think lighting is the problem.
I don't think so either, but I'm just trying to offer some kind of help to maybe keeping the place a little bit more secure by adding some lighting that would show, shine down to the parking lot.
Thank you. I'll give my thoughts on the, on the request, and my thoughts are that to add a 14-by-48-foot sign there on that particular parcel in its proximity to the existing sign there that's shown is quite large, it's not a 14-by-48, but it's a pretty good-sized sign, I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood, I think it's in keeping, we have done a fairly complete job of prohibiting billboards west of Maryland Parkway, and I really think we should hold our line there. It's unfortunate that that's, yours is property is the first, or this request is the first one that comes up, but I don't think we should permit them to start working their way back towards downtown.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I hate to belabor this, but I wanted to add something, because the applicant, if I may, said something about, the reason that he chose this site for the sign is because he met all code requirements, and that, so you should approve for that reason. Let me just say that the burden of proof on special use permits is on the applicant, and so they have to come here and show you why this application, the thing, the billboard in the application is compatible with the surrounding area. So it's just important for the record to show that it's his burden of proof to prove to you that it's compatible for the area. If you think you want to keep billboards stopped at Maryland, if you think that this redevelopment area doesn't need another billboard, those are things that are important for the record, but just understand that just because it's not within the proximity distance requirement, that you must approve this billboard.
I think we're ready for a motion, anybody want to?
I'm going to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial of SUP 28-216, simply because I feel that if we start with you, we can't say no to the next guy, and then the next guy, and I'm sorry, but that's my motion.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Good, thank you very much.
We now move to item number 29, as 28 has been obeyed, 29 is special use permit 28-293, the applicant is Clearwire Communications, the owner is Mayhill LLC, for proposed 80-foot wireless communication facility stealth design at 4221 West Charleston Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, although the cell tower itself is of a stealth design, staff finds that it's not compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood, as its height is excessive, and recommends denial.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now, and would invite anyone in attendance who is to speak on the matter to please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, state your case for the applicant.
John Collins. Basically, we feel that the height is valid due to the surrounding sites. We really, really tried, but the propagations and the design calls for the 80 feet due to a microwave system.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I saw some green on there, is there a park or someplace else that this could go, that we could get the revenue on this?
Actually, we looked at doing everything we could with our existing surrounding sites, we've co-located three other locations, and we only have about a third of a mile to work within either side of this area of town.
Anyone else in attendance who is to speak on the matter? Seeing none, sir?
I'm the owner of the property, and the thing that the staff.
Your name, sir?
I'm Merrill Maltzberry, Mayhill LLC, and the staff talked about the closeness to residential, and actually, just south of the property is a church, so it isn't residential, it's already been a variance for the church, and so it's nearly 270 feet to or more to any residential, and that, the church is in between the, between the two, so I don't see that that's a problem in this particular case.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, declare the public hearing closed, turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
I'd like to follow staff's recommendation for denial of SUP 28-274, because it's.
293.
I'm 293, because it's just too high, and it's just very unattractive for the area.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
We now move to item number 30, which is special use permit 8297, or 28297, the applicant is Maria Teresa Para, owner is Savannah Investments, for a proposed beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant at 2081 North Decatur Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all of the minimum special use permit requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner, therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now, and ask anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, please. Applicant, please.
Hi, I'm Maria Para, and I just applied for a beer/wine company with food.
What kind of restaurant do you have?
It's a Mexican restaurant, it's seafood.
That's very good, it's not very good?
Yes, it is, because I'm cook.
Just checking, okay.
Anytime, Charlie, sure.
Thank you. And you'll accept all the conditions that staff suggests?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed, and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
I'll make a motion on this item SUP 28-297, I'll move for approval, subject conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to city council at their August 6th meeting.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 31, which is special use permit 28-315, the applicant is Via Brazil Steakhouse, the owner of Fort Apache Commons Park LLC, for proposed supper club at 1225 South Fort Apache Road, Suite 100. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets the minimum special use permit requirements and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner, therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you much. Like to declare the public hearing open, and ask anyone wishing to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and state their name for the record and their position for the applicant we have.
Good evening, I'm Laura Dreha, 520 South 4th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is really a housekeeping item. The property currently holds a special use permit for an Asian-themed restaurant, and we're asking for a new occupant, which is a Brazilian-themed restaurant. We do have staff's approval, I ask for yours as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Could you just real briefly tell me the difference between a restaurant and a supper club? Could you just real briefly tell me the difference between a restaurant and a supper club? Somebody.
Staff?
Well, the supper club use permits a separate bar separated by a baffler system that also allows five slot machines as part of that. A restaurant, of course, would not be permitted the alcohol bar use as a standalone.
The supper club charges more. So, okay. Anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion, but Mr. Rankin of our city staff has been pestering me about asking you to tell us a little bit about what a Brazilian steakhouse is and what kind of food that you serve.
From what I understand from the applicant, a Brazilian steakhouse offers both a buffet as well as a meat service, and by that I mean, a person can obtain a salad bar, sit down, and then somewhat similar to a dim sum type business plan, people walk around with seventeen different types of meat that can be sliced in different ways as requested by the patrons.
Well, yabba dabba doo. My motion would be for approval of that. It sounds pretty good to me. Motion for approval, following the staff recommendation.
Motion's been made, please. Cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to council on August sixth.
Doesn't sound like a place to take a vegetarian. Item number thirty-two and companion item number thirty-three. Thirty-two is special use permit twenty-eight three twenty-eight. The applicant owner is Tex and Lisa Carter to allow livestock farming, bovine, and horses, with a waiver to allow eighteen horses and seven bovines for a total of twenty-five, where twelve is the maximum allowed, on ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three square feet at seventy-seven oh one Cowboy Trail. The companion item number thirty-three is special use permit twenty-eight six ten to allow horse corral or stable private, with a waiver to allow eighteen horses, where twelve is the maximum allowed, on ninety-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three square feet. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to both special use permits, staff finds the request to be in excess of permitted code and recommends denial.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now, and ask anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, to please approach the microphone, give your name for the record for the applicant, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Carter.
Tex Carter, seven seven oh one Cowboy Trail.
Thank you. What do we have going here?
Well, we have been residents of the Las Vegas Valley for seven years, myself and my husband, for ten years. Our dream here has been to own our own property with two acres, so that we can provide the lifestyle to our children that we were blessed to have growing up. And in that, when we found this property, we did a lot of research, and our realtor did checking into the property, because we had a few goals in mind of things that we wanted to do. She informed us that we could have twenty-five head of animals on the property. We later found out after purchasing the property that that was not true. We did make calls to the city planning and zoning before even putting an offer on the property. The house and the property at seventy-seven oh one Cowboy Trail had been vacant for two-plus years, owned by the bank. Before that, it was horse property. The house was non-livable. We have moved in and then done many improvements on the property, and the house is now livable. It was a public nuisance. There was teenagers breaking into the house. There was much graffiti inside the house. There was vandalism going on to neighbors that they claim was coming from that adjacent Last year in two thousand and seven, if the city can look back, the city of Las Vegas went out to this property before the Fourth of July and cleaned the property up because it was a fire hazard. We are very conscientious to our neighbors. I do have one letter here that I will address here momentarily. Many concerns when you bring horses into a neighborhood are obviously dust. We have hauled in two hundred ton of road base and six hundred ton of sand. We water our arena every time before we ride. We have put a mistress system in one set of barn area, and we have plans to put a mistress system and a sprinkling system into both sets of barn areas to help control dust. Fly control. We spray our horses daily. We also have been spraying with products called Max Force, once or twice a week as needed, which will kill, it baits and kills flies, so we spray the ground with that once or twice a week. We had a neighbor just yesterday ask us, what are you guys doing over there? I thought we were going to have tons of flies around here with you guys moving in, and we don't see them. And they were very impressed that we've been taking the efforts to keep the flies down. The smell. We clean our stalls daily. We are very hard workers. This is our livelihood. This is our passion. We're both born and raised on ranches and been in the equine industry our whole lives. As I said, I'd address this letter from our neighbors to the north directly behind us, and they are directly adjacent to our property, and I just want to touch on a few things. They were not able to be present tonight. They wanted to write, we have no complaints about the livestock currently housed with Lisa and Tex Carter. They have gone out of their way to be certain that their animals do not bother us in any way. When building the arena, the return chute was originally along our back wall. We were concerned with that and would cause excess dust and debris in our backyard and pool. We discussed this with Tex, and he willingly agreed to move the return chute to the opposite side of the arena. This meant double work for him. However, he did not complain at all. He was eager to work with us to ensure that the arena did not cause any problems for us. Lisa and Tex keep their stalls exceptionally clean and water down the arena prior to riding. They are repeatedly asked us to please inform them of any concerns with the arena or the animals. They are very willing to accommodate us in any way necessary to guarantee that we are able to enjoy our properties. I have no doubt, if granted the variance special use permit allowing them to increase the number of livestock that they will be able to house, they will continue to maintain the property and livestock as well as they have now. Sincerely, Rhonda and Jean Hamilton. We have two young boys, one's twelve, one's five, and we all know in our society that the youth of America have a very hard time, and keeping these children entertained is very important to us. Teaching our children responsibility, hardworking, and we feel that providing the horses in their lives does this. We hope that this will keep them out of trouble. We are very family-based. Everything we do is as a family, roping, junior rodeos, Little Britches rodeos. We are very active in the equine community here in Las Vegas. We ride and train all of our own rope horses, so that our children, our twelve-year-old son, is sitting in the top six in the all-around for the Little Britches finals, which he's going to Pueblo, Colorado, to compete in at the end of this month, and you have to have nice horses, and we make all of our own horses. On the other side of that, I have been the practice manager for Desert Pines Equine Center for seven years. We are a medical surgical center here locally in the valley. There is a huge shortage of equine veterinarians, and when we were looking at this property, I am quite large. We have Pima students and College of Southern University students at the clinic that come in, and we help to educate them and teach them how to help with the veterinary side. When we were looking at this property, our goal was also to take on horses that no longer had beneficial use as performance or pleasure horses. They have lameness issues, and they will be, would have been euthanized, disposed of, or slaughtered, had we not given them a home. These nine horses, we allow Western Vet Conference, which is a non-tax educational veterinary educational group in the town, we allow them to use those horses two days a month, they take them off the property, and they use them in educational training for veterinarians that have no experience, so they can come work on these horses, learn how to diagnose them, and use that when they go on further in their career. We feel that we do provide value to our community and our neighborhood. We have moved into a house that was vacant. No one's been there for two-plus years. We have cleaned it up. We are working at cleaning it up more. We plan on putting trees in. We plan on making the place nice. We also are helping our community and helping in the education of veterinary students. Currently, within a thousand feet of our residence, there isn't a whole lot of horses. But within a mile radius of our current property, there is plans for a Northwest Equine facility. That facility is less than a mile away from us. It will board eight hundred and forty horses. It'll have stalls for boarding eight hundred and forty horses. It'll have three arenas. It'll have RV access. We are also within a mile of Bradley Bridle Park, which is a community facility for equine enthusiasts to go ride their horses. We also have mini trails in our neighborhood for public use for people to ride their horses and enjoy the equine livelihood that I feel is a huge part of the Las Vegas heritage, and that is why we are asking you to grant us an increase in our number of animals.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're.
Chairman. My name is Marilyn Carlin, and I live at seventy-seven fifty Cowboy Trail. I'm their neighbors, and I have absolutely nothing against Tex and Lisa. They have, as they said, come in and made the place much nicer. The only problem I have, and most of the neighbors around us, because I did collect some signatures, and we do not mind the horses, but they want bovine, and I'm not sure that we want eighteen horses, but I know everyone is very against bovine. And the reasons why is because they are zoned for resident estates right now, and when we bought these half-acre resident estates, we have a certain lifestyle in mind, and changing the zone to include the farming would change our lifestyle. I know right now there are no flies, but I know in the last couple of weeks, there have been a lot more flies than there was before. The air quality, the noise, the biting of the horse flies, chemicals needed to control the flies and the smell could possibly be a problem, which would affect our outdoor activities, barbecuing and swimming. Also, having an active farm with bovine, I think it would make our residential estates more difficult to sell and possibly bring our value down. That's mostly my objections and the objections of our neighbors who I got on the signature list.
Thank you. If you would like that signature petition to become part of the record.
I did turn it in.
Okay.
But I would definitely turn it in to you if you'd like.
Thank you. It's fine. We have it.
You have it?
Okay.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nothing against you. I love your family, what you've done. It's just that we do not want bovine.
I understand. Next.
Yes, my name's Carolyn Davison. I live at seventy-seven forty Cowboy Trail, and I, like Marilyn, have nothing against you. I'm glad that you moved in and that you are improving that property. It has been empty, and I do understand some of the vandalism and things that went on. My concern is, is that I've been out there for seventeen years, and, you know, this is like a strip of homes that are on half-acre lots, custom homes, that have nice swimming pools and nice yards, and the flies are an issue. The stench is an issue. It's clean, you can only be so clean. I don't mind what you're zoned for now. That's not a problem, but I do have a problem with the cows in increasing how many horses that they want to have. I think that they can have the lifestyle that they want with the zoning the way that it is now. I don't think that it should be changed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. My name is Rod Hamilton. I live at seventy-seven thirty Leon Avenue, which is directly behind the back wall of the Carters. As such, I think I'm probably currently the most affected neighbor of the operations that are going on over there right now, and I do have a lot of energy, and I'd like to take a few of your minutes here to discuss a couple of issues. At that time, in February oh six, I was active-duty Air Force, and I transferred here to Nellis Air Force Base from Texas. Again, that was in February oh six. I knew at that time I was going to retire here, and I wanted to remain here locally. As such, I took five months in selecting a place to live, and I finally settled on my current residence, which is a half-acre lot with a custom house. It's a very nice piece of property. On one side of my house, on the west side, that is directly adjacent to their property, I have half a basketball court. It's a fairly good-sized area in my backyard. It's a real nice backyard. I have a pool. I have a rock landscaping with multiple waterfalls and a spa and lots of palm trees. It's a very nice piece of property. I've lived here for two and a half summers with absolutely no problems whatsoever until the last three months. At that point in time, when my neighbors bought the property, they put in five large stalls directly adjacent to my west wall, right up against the wall, with the back wall as the back part of their stall. Those five stalls currently house nine horses. In addition, further north on that wall, they put up a haystack that is twenty feet long and extends four feet above my six-and-a-half-foot block wall fence that surrounds my property. At that point in time, it was uncovered, and it is still right now relatively uncovered. It does have a top on it, but that's about it. Every time the wind blows, since I am on the east side of their property, I get the brunt of the dust, the hay, the smell, and everything. The main reason I bought that house is, was the backyard, because it provided a peaceful, serene environment, where I can sit out there in the evening, you know, enjoy a drink in the mornings. Every day I go out there, at least I used to, go out there and have a cup of coffee, you know, enjoy the pool. I can't do that anymore. I have to wash off my patio weekly when the wind blows due to the dirt and the hay, and I'm not talking just dust, I'm talking standing piles of dirt and hay. Up until last weekend, I had my boat parked on the west side of the house that is directly adjacent to where they have their haystack. I moved it out last weekend to clean it up, so I could try and sell it. That boat is absolutely filthy with dirt. The entire interior is just covered with hay. My master bedroom windows are also on that same side of the house. I used to be able to open those windows and enjoy some free circulation of some fresh air that would circulate throughout the house. I can't do that now because of the smell and because of the dust. The stuckled block wall fence that surrounds my property now has fresh cracks in it directly where they have their five stalls, where they have their nine horses. I've had to add massive chemicals to my pool in the last two months to try and keep it clear. It came to the point a week and a half ago where I could no longer keep it clean. It turned into a virtual swamp. I had to pump it out.
Could I jump to the conclusion there, or you're not supporting this request?
I am not supporting this request.
Okay, thank you.
We have been totally infested with flies. My dog has recently been losing huge amounts of hair. I don't know if it's because of the chemicals they're using or the insecticides, but she has open sores throughout her entire body due to the flies eating on her. I had to buy a screened enclosure last weekend to protect her from the flies. As a matter of fact, their horses have hoods on their heads to protect them from the flies.
I think we have your position pretty clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Today, there's currently fifteen horses on the property. I think that's a violation of the ordinance that currently only allows twelve. I vehemently oppose this.
Thank you very much for your input.
In the last two months, I've. In the last two months, I've spent six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars on chemical components, pool components, medication for my dog, and when I get...
You're against it. I think we give that mark.
At the end of this month, I'm going to be out over a thousand dollars on components and water bills and everything else directly due to the activities. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, please.
Thank you. My name is Helen Newton, and I live at seventy-seven sixty-one Cowboy Trail. My back wall abuts the northwest side of the Carters' property. What this really boils down to is appropriateness, scale, and responsibility. Is it appropriate for a large horse operation of any kind to invade a small development where staff has noted there appear to be no horses in the vicinity? Yes, homeowners can have a couple of horses in their backyards on their half-acre lots, but only a maximum of three per lot and only for personal use and recreation. Our development and its zoning never intended for eighteen horses to be stable together in a large herd in the middle of the development, resulting in large congregations of flies and manure. There are a maximum of sixty-four home sites on the Cowboy Leon neighborhood. Of these sixty-four, by my count, all but about six or seven of these sites are developed as single-family homes. We purchased our home slightly over two years ago. At that time, the property the Carters purchased had one house and a shade structure on it. It was unoccupied and was not being used for horses. We understood that when it was sold, there would likely be three additional homes built on the site. Developing those sites would finish the development for all practical purposes. In Clark County, where operations such as the Carters are more common, it's a generally accepted requirement that owners provide visual screening and landscape buffers between their operation and the adjoining neighbors. It's hoped that any buffers similar to those required by Clark County would be added to the future site plan for this property. Knowing that the Carters have facilitated roping competitions in the past, I personally asked them if that was what they planned to do at seventy-seven oh-one Cowboy Trail. They assured me their operation was a private one, and they did not plan to hold competitions there. However, Mrs. Carter did state that if I complained and made it difficult, they would just get a variance for her operation, and then she could have as many horses and cattle as she pleased and could decide to hold public roping competitions. The site plan that was provided in your packet is not really complete. Their big hay structure isn't on it. Finally, there are no streetlights on Cowboy Trail. We residents really like the quiet solitude of our location while still enjoying the protections of the city of Las Vegas. In the last week or so, the Carters have acknowledged to some of their neighbors that the next thing they're adding is lights to the riding corral so they can enjoy their property after the sun has gone down. Once the lights are installed, illuminating thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy square feet, an area the equivalent of one-and-a-third, one-and-a-half times the typical home site, how much enjoyment and quiet solitude are the rest of us going to have? In conclusion, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to these matters and remind you that in my mind, the real question is one of appropriateness, scale, and responsibility. I would certainly not object to an appropriately sized project adequately buffered from impacting its surrounding neighbors. The Carters are not providing such a project.
Thank you. Any additional speakers that want to bring up new information? I think we're getting the gist here from the neighbors. If you'd limit yourself to new rebuttal...
I'll make it quick. My name's Veronica Sanchez. I am here on behalf of the Carters. I am not a current neighbor. I am a previous neighbor. I can tell you that their home that they had in the past was probably just as bad as when they first purchased this one, which was a complete dump. I saw it every day. I can tell you that in a matter of months, they significantly improved their previous home, made it very comfortable to look at. The fly control then was to a minimum. They have always worked very hard with their neighbors to communicate with them. I can tell you, I've known them for over seven years, and due to them being good neighbors, we have become good friends. And now I am employed by Lisa Carter for the reason of the kind of person she is and the kind of person that Tex has been in the past. They've tried really hard, like I said, in the past, as well as the present. I've witnessed them working hard to get things in order. So I'll make it very clear. Like I said before, they do try to... Their stalls were always very clean in the past. I have gone to their home from beginning and up to where they are now, working very hard. They know... They are neighbors that do care about the people that live next them, behind them, in front of them. And I can say that firsthand. And I won't make it brief, just so you do get to know the kind of people they are. And I'm trying to make this very brief, is that all they do want is a family-type of atmosphere for their children, for their roping. They have never had big events as far as their backyard other than family events, okay? So with that said, I do appreciate your time, and I really do hope that you make this possible for them.
Thank you very much. Next? Anyone else wishing to speak and bring up additional information? You guys may want to sit down for a while. It appears that we've got an audience here.
My name is Paula McFarland, and I live at seventy-six ninety Cowboy Trail. With the exception of one other resident in our little housing area between Jones and Leon and Whispering Sands and Farm, I've been out there the longest. Moved out there in nineteen-ninety. We all had horses. That was the reason we moved out there, was so that we could have the horses. And at one point, almost every household had horses. And because I'm probably one of the last of the original owners out there, I really feel strongly about this and about having the horses. I currently don't have any. My last two died. But there's always that possibility I will get horses. I am very, very glad to see the Carters move in. The property was a dump. It was vandalized. It was a breeding ground for whatever. It was full of weeds. They have become very good neighbors. They're very good friends, and I'm very glad to see them there. I have not witnessed any more flies than we've had normally. And quite frankly, I don't smell them, and I'm right across the street. I haven't noticed any additional dust. They keep the arena watered down. Everything is very neat and tidy, and they clean the corrals daily. I'm very, very in favor of their operation.
Excuse me, ma'am. Before you step down, you talked about the Carters being able to have horses. I don't think anybody has said they can't have horses. They're allowed twelve by code, and I think they're seeking twenty-five. Would it be your argument that you think twenty-five total animals with the bovine would be appropriate for that two-acre lot?
I don't have a problem with it. They have managed to maintain it very well with the current level of horses. I have no reason to believe that they wouldn't maintain it with more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak with some new information?
My name is Oak Hill, seventy-seven eighty-one Cowboy Trail, right next door to the people that wrote the letter. And I do welcome them, and they're nice people. I don't have anything against them. But I lived in my house for past five years, and past several weeks, I cannot step outside to open the door, to open the door to step outside without the flies just coming in. I always have flies in the house now. I never did before. And another thing is, we need to consider, within a few blocks, there's an elementary school. I don't think flies will make any distinction sitting on the manure pile and going sitting in the lunch of the children. And we need to give permit to betterment of the community, not to jeopardize or to endanger the health of the people in the community.
Thank you very much. And perhaps one last?
You could get my mother, too.
My name is Terri Berg. I live at seventy-seven sixty-one Cowboy Trail. Our back fence looks into their arena. And you need to know that when they don't have the bovine there, they have a mechanical bovine that they drag with a four-wheeler that is quite interesting because it makes a lot of noise, but it is a way of them practicing without having the actual cow. Our fence is six foot on their side. It is only three-and-a-half foot on our side because of the elevation of the house and the pool. We have lost some of the use of our outdoor area because of the flies. And I think they should be allowed. I could have three horses on my property. I certainly think that they should be allowed to have their number of horses that are allowed to. And they should be allowed to put structures up with permits and a specified distance from the block wall that is correct, and that they should follow those rules because that's what our rules are for. But I think it's very important that they don't have more than what is allowed because the property is not really set up for it. It really is a small setup for small horse owners with large houses and nice landscaping and things, and not for a horse operation.
Thank you. Anyone else having any new information they'd like to bring up? Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little slow.
My name is Valerie Casey. I live at seventy-seven sixty-one Cowboy Trail. I moved here from Arctic Circle Hot Springs, Alaska, following my husband's death. I moved my permanent residence here to live with my daughter. I'm limited in my walking ability and my ability to stand. So my window on the world is right opposite this property. I want to also address the traffic on Cowboy Trail. For some reason, there's totally unrestricted parking on our street, and there are at least usually two commercial vehicles parked on the street for days at a time, plus numerous, numerous cars. Now, the bulk of this traffic is kitty-corner from the subject property. And quite frankly, I don't know why all of this activity takes place. I've been asked by my friends what's going on in the neighborhood. We don't receive mail at our houses. We have to go to a mail drop to receive our mail. This is just around the corner on Jones. So there is traffic on our street. I have been prevented from driving down Cowboy Trail because, well, let me regress. There are five cul-de-sacs on our street, and each has, I believe, four houses. The entrance into these cul-de-sacs is, I suppose, thirty feet across. So ingress and egress isn't a problem into the cul-de-sacs, but it indeed is a serious problem into the subject property. They have a very narrow gate, which is maintained close to what it should be, but when they want to pull in...
Thank you.
No, I don't want... I want to be heard, please. You haven't heard this.
I've heard... Well, okay, you step... Bring it on. We don't care about the... It's about the equestrian and the cattle, not the parking problems that may or may not be attributed to what we don't know.
That's not the issue.
Okay, good. What is your issue?
Well...
I think, if I can, ma'am, it sounds like all of you who are speaking against it are saying it's too excessive and it's too intense for that size of property, and there's too many animals and whatever.
But our road, all these horses coming in and out, these horse trailers, this road can simply not endure that amount of traffic.
I understand.
And also indicative of these people, they posted a very obnoxious sign on their property. "We don't call 911," and it's a picture of a big gun on it. I also want to address the issue of the riding area on the north end of the property. Could we have that diagram up?
Ma'am, you're given a fair amount of time, and you've got to get to the point...
All right. I want to say that that is an enclosed corral, and that is thirty-one feet from my window. It's thirty-one feet from the house.
Right.
And the fence is also thirty-one feet, or thirty-two feet, excuse me, from the road right of way, as nearly as I can determine. It is a corral. And aren't there some restrictions on the building of corrals? It doesn't have a gate, but it can readily be blocked off with their commercial water truck. And let me tell you, if you want to hear noise, they had a goat in there one night, and these people on horseback were chasing that goat around in that corral. It was screaming. And let me tell you, my red hat group is coming out. Twenty-four of them are going to be in my pool the third Monday of this month, and I hope they don't have to listen and see what we see from our backyard.
I think we understand. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak on this particular matter, bring up some new information perhaps?
Yes, thank you. Todd Harley, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I keep in western Nebraska. I know horses well. And I know that whether you have twelve horses or twenty-five, you're going to have the flies, the same number. It depends on how well the people keep their property up. So my suggestion would be to approve it with a six- or a twelve-month review or however you want to do it. But while I'm here, I want to make a plea here. I volunteer at the University Extension Orchards at Horse Drive and Decatur. Dr. Morris needs all the horse poop and cow poop that we can get out there, and rotten hay and all of that. We need that for fertilizer. So any of these people, all these horse people that are here, please, if they have any, bring it out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more, ma'am, your opportunity?
Hi there. I'll be brief. My name is Kate Hart. I'm actually an employee of Desert Pines Equine. I'm a veterinary technician over there. I've known the Carters very well, and all I just want to vouch for, I really feel that you should get this special use permit. They have done an incredible job with that place. And as the gentleman said, twenty-five more horses is not going to increase the fly population. I've had the opportunity to be, or gone with our veterinarians, to quite a few properties in the valley that should be shut down. I mean, it's ridiculous. And what the Carters are trying to achieve over there is just amazing. And I guess, quick for the residents that are moved in there, if you bought a property next to an abandoned airport and it started to run again, what do you expect? I mean, this is Clark County. It was a horse facility, and it looks a million times better than it ever did. And as far as adding to the community, you think you'd want that. But I just want to vouch for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? One more?
I think I'm the last one.
Hi. I'm Terri Gamboas, sixty-three twenty-five Iron Mountain Road. And I live in that same northwest area, and I'm also an equestrian person. I've known the Carters for a number of years. They're excellent people, very honest and ethical people, and they have moved in and done an incredible job with that property. I also would like to agree with the gentleman that said if you have twelve horses or twenty-five horses, you're going to have the same number of flies. That's true. And some of the people that did have complaints do have horses themselves, so they are also contributing to the fly situation, and they are in an equestrian neighborhood. It is splintered with equestrian and non-equestrian neighbors in that area. So I know this happens quite often with equestrian neighborhoods. You have people living there who are non-equestrian, but they have to understand that they moved into a rural estate area. And those half-acre lots are zoned rural estate, so they have to understand that.
Ma'am, the burden is on these folks to prove otherwise. So I don't want to argue with you, but they do not have a right at this point for that number of animals there. So I'd like to conclude this so we can discuss it amongst ourselves.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, I think you've already had your opportunity to speak.
May I say one more?
No, ma'am. No, we're pretty much through now. Anyone else having any new information to bring up on this matter? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and allow the applicant about three minutes, and we'll set the clock to provide some rebuttal to what's been said.
Okay. I want to address first the issue of having twelve animals. That can be horses or bovine, which I'm sure, I understand that many of the neighbors in that area don't understand. We can have a total number of twelve horses and bovine. Anything north of Cheyenne, south of Cheyenne cannot, but anything north of Cheyenne can have horses and bovine. Per many neighbors in our area, there's been a lot of false testimonial going on by the three women to the north of us, saying that we are going to have rodeos and an AP system and a bunch of people in there. We have never done that. We never plan on doing that. This is going to be a private facility for us and our kids, and that is it.
Even if this doesn't get approved, we're still going to have twelve large animals. We're still going to rope. We're still going to ride our horses. We're still going to be going in and out of our property with our horse trailers. We're still going to continue our lifestyle. The only reason we're trying to do this is for the older horses that we let the Western Vet use. If that doesn't happen, then we'll have to do something with them horses. And that's the only reason we're asking.
And at least, we're unlike many people in this city. We're trying to do things the right way. We have tried to proceed the whole time the right way. You can ask code enforcement, look at the planning. We have followed everything that Scott has asked us to do.
Everything permitted.
Everything's permitted. Everything's permitted. We've done everything that he has asked.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed and I'd like to turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion at this point.
Yeah, I'll chime in here. I just want to reiterate, I'm going to jump on the Carter's bandwagon here for just a moment. Did some research again because I'm not real familiar with city code, but in an RE zone, what is allowed is an animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with and without outside pens. That's an allowed use in the RE zone. Animal keeping and husbandry, animal production, I guess that's where they assemble the little animals. And horse corral or stables, commercial horse corral or stables, private livestock farming, bovine, and horses. So the Carters are correct. This is an area, this is originally a 40 acre parcel. It was subdivided down into two and a half acre parcels and then those two and a half acre parcels were subdivided down into half acre lots. So what the Carters have here is one of the original two and a half acres. Everything else that was around it came after the fact. I have a real problem with people coming in and moving next to the airport and complaining about the noise. I have a real problem with people coming in, moving next to the sanitation district and complaining about the smell. It's just because some of these people on the two, on the half acre lots don't have horses does not mean that they should preclude the people that do have horses or getting mean or getting nasty with them. I was really impressed with some of the folks that came up and spoke against what the Carters are proposing and then turned around and shook their hand or gave them a hug. So I think in the big picture, it looks like they're doing something correct. Now I'm going to jump off that bandwagon. It sounds like that this is a commercial venture because you did say that this was your livelihood. I have an issue with that being a commercial area. Even the application says that it was for private use. I have a hard time understanding how that many livestock can be for private use only. There's also the issue of the 44 protests. That bothers me a lot because before tonight I came into this thinking, wow, you know, it's a nice looking place. There was, there were some people on the bandwagon that mailed in the cards that were for use, some that were off of it. Didn't really have a problem with it, but I'm really concerned about the 44 protests. If I might offer a suggestion, typically what we do in these situations when there are large protests like this is we have you hold a neighborhood meeting. The city of Las Vegas can help you do that and if I'm not mistaken, they will even mail the applications and/or the notices, stuff like that. Anyway, whatever the semantics of it are, we will help you. It sounds like maybe if you got together with the people around you and just chatted, and I don't mean having people come in and throw knives and stab you in the back and scream and yell, that's unproductive. And I, it almost sounds like that you're going to have that because it sounds like you've had it in the past from a couple of people. But I might offer that, that maybe you can come to some sort of agreement or whatever it is, because you're right, you're allowed to have 12 on there. So if this gets denied, you're still going to be doing basically the same thing. I would really suggest that you hold the neighborhood meeting, hold this application for maybe 30 or 60 days. Get with those folks, see what you can work out and then come back to us and say, okay, this is what we, we applied for, this is what we worked out with the neighbors, this is our agreement. We agree with these guys, we don't agree with these guys, but I think you're going to be farther along in the system. So that's all that I can offer, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, Commissioner Dunham, I would agree with you, but I actually think we've got it backwards because at this point it sounds like folks have painted themselves in a corner and, you know, just sitting here in the last 40 minutes or so, listening to these arguments, I find fault with all of them. And you all have kind of made me a little crazy. The Carters, your statements that we've done everything that we can and everything we're supposed to, I absolutely disagree. If your neighbors object to the fact that you want more than twice as many livestock on the property than what is allowed, I really think it behooves you to begin the process trying to win them over, whatever that takes. You may not win everybody over, but at this point you've got a lot of angry people and I don't know how, how that can be resolved if it can be. But the burden is entirely on you. You're asking for a special use permit for something that the code does not allow. It isn't the burden of the neighbors to prove other, that it's inappropriate. It's your burden legally to prove that whatever you're planning to do is not going to affect them and that the code is irrelevant in this case. And you certainly haven't proven that because you've got 40 some protests and a room full of people that spent their evening to come out here and half of them are pretty angry. So, I mean, at this juncture, you know, a neighborhood meeting is swell, but I'm not sure you're going to get to where you need to be. And it might behoove you to see what we've done here in the past. I mean, some of us have been here for, I've been here for seven years and we've had Chucky and the bovines and we've had the chickens and we've heard these arguments over and over and over again. No one is saying you cannot have horses. What the code says is that you want twice as many as what is allowed. And you've got to get your neighbors on board. Now how you do that, that's up to you, but you're never going to get my vote pushing that green button unless you can make everybody somewhat satisfied. And that's kind of the bottom line. So all the protestations about, you know, your character, I'm sure you have a fine character, but you've missed the boat somewhere because you've made a lot of people really angry. The statement about 25 is the same as 12, Mr. Farlow, I absolutely disagree with you. You know, when you've got 18 horses and seven bovine, every one of them poop. And, you know, so you've got solid waste that you've got to deal with. And with that comes flies. And the people who live next door, I mean, I grant you it is horse property, but I would agree with Commissioner Dunham, this is, it sounds like you've got two employees that came and spoke in your character. It sounds like an awful big operation for just, you know, living a lifestyle that you like. It sounds like a business, a for-profit commerce-related business. And I think that neighbors might find some objection to that. So this absolutely will not seem my support unless you can get some concurrence with your neighbors and clearly that's not going to happen anytime soon, in my opinion.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Steinman?
I went out there and was hoping you were home and there was a person outside and I said, "You text?" He said, "No, they're away right now." But I did want to chat with you and understand and I didn't want to walk on your site without permission, but I was able to observe and you do keep a clean house, there's no doubt. I was having trouble counting the head from the street, but it looked like it might have been a little bit more than it should be. But I think the wise, the wise old people that created RE districts, whether they be men and women of this city at one time, agreed on something called three for each one of those lots. There's a reason for that. They didn't want five per lot. And to allow 25 and double it just doesn't seem right to me. But at the same time, I think with 12, the flies are going to go over the walls, the hay is going to go over the walls, it's still going to be that situation. And I think what you have to do is work with these people that if that hay bales in the wrong place and driving him off a wall, how do you cover it? What do you do to cut that back? I don't think you can cut back the flies. I think you try as hard as you can, but they're still there in that environment and that's not going to change. So I really congratulate you for what you've done with a property I never saw before, but I understand was not real good. I would hope that if you ever decide to put lights up, that you do it the right way and you get the proper approval from the city to do it right so those people aren't living with lights at 12 o'clock at night. And I hope that you would refrain from having goat races at late at night for these people, even though they're fun when it happens. I'm sure, I don't think it's a good idea probably. But you appear to be decent neighbors and I'd like to see you keep it that way. You're going to have a better time there. You have two boys. You have 12 horses. I think the ratio is pretty good for those boys to have different horses they can use. Now, that's where it should be. And if you're going to want more, I have some of the suspicions that Commissioner Dunham has, why are you going that way? There's only four of you on there that are in the family and you want to keep it as a family thing. And I'm getting a little suspicious of having six head for each human on that property. And so I, I really can't support going to 25, but I hope you can continue to be a good neighbor and even a better neighbor and keep those people happy. So they're even going to have to live with it. We can't force you to take those horses out of there and we're not here to do that. So let's try as best we can. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Quinn, wants to speak?
I've had the privilege to have a horse at Gail Powers Ranch for seven years. We just sold Scout two weeks ago and I've seen how much work it takes to keep a place looking this good and well-kept. But what Gail Powers always taught me was code is code and she would have loved to have put more horses on her property for many more reasons, but, you know, she just couldn't. And the one thing that I don't ever want to see happen is our children in this community not have the opportunity to have a horse because what it taught my daughter was to nurture and to take care of something and to really learn to love something. But what you're doing to these neighbors is also not fair and I'm so sad not to be able to support you because I love what you're doing, but I also know that it's my job to follow what this code is and Gail Powers taught me that the code is the code or she'd have 10 more horses on her land too. It's not because I don't love what you're doing and I hope that you work it out with your neighbors.
Thank you. Having said that, I think we're ready for a motion.
The issue is, is are you willing to, you have to, if you, if you want to hold a neighborhood meeting, you have to request this item to be obeyed, I would say, for a minimum of 45 days, probably 60 days. Or your other option is to let us vote and I think you know which way the vote's going to go. So it's either hold it, get a neighborhood meeting, or proceed tonight. So it's, it's in your court.
Let's hold, try to hold a meeting.
Neighborhood meeting.
45.
45.
Plus we'll be gone for two weeks.
Yeah, make it September sometime.
What's the first one in September?
Can we have this meeting on a weekend?
No, no, we're not going to decide that here.
Just make it the first meeting in September. That's fine.
I'll make a motion on item number...
32 and 33.
32 and 33, thank you, to hold this to the first meeting, planning commission meeting in September of '08.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion to hold carries.
May I ask a question, please?
Wait till...
We'll stick around afterwards, I'll be glad to talk to you. Item number 35 is Director's Business, DIR 27611, the applicant owner city of Las Vegas to designate Woodlawn Cemetery as an historic landmark within the city of Las Vegas at 1500 Las Vegas Boulevard South.
Thank you. There was the, this is an item that has been recommended by the City's Historic Preservation Commission, a full investigation of the site and determination that Woodlawn Cemetery is well-deserving of a nomination status fulfilling multiple areas of significance within the National Register Criterion. Staff is recommending approval of this designation as a recommendation that will then go forward to the city council. Any questions, I'll attempt to address them.
Thank you. Do we have a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and let us know your position on the matter. Seeing none, the public hearing closed and turned over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
What, what makes a historic cemetery? Would somebody please explain that to me? I actually went to this cemetery. You won't believe it.
There's two factors. I do believe it, sir. There are two factors. One is the original architecture. There are actually architectural characteristics with regard to the design of the streets, the...
The interior streets.
Yes, the interior streets, the landscaping, the walls, the design of the structures there. And also then, as in any other historic significance, is the persons associated with it. And for instance, there are persons that, noteworthy persons, there were listed in the original 1913, the cemetery began in 1913. For instance, the Domenica Marchetti, who was the mother of the owner of Hotel Nevada and some of the other notables from the community that are buried there. So it's both the physical characteristics of the site and the significant persons associated with it, the occupants.
Thank you.
It is very interesting to go there and read headstones. It really is.
And you know how many dead people are in the cemetery?
Why don't you tell us?
All of them. My motion be for approval of agenda item number 35, the Director's Business, 27611.
I was alive when I was reading headstones.
Motion has been made, please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to council on August 6th.
We now move to item number 36, which is the citizen's participation. The public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Sir?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and I have a complaint. And my complaint is this, as a planning commission, you need to look ahead, what's best for everybody. I mean, you know that. Why isn't that, that, that new bus terminal, that they don't have all of the transportation systems there in one place so you don't have to walk two blocks or three blocks with all your bags to the Greyhound or haul them out again to a, to the, to a hotel to get the airport bus? All of the, it's like the Bay Area in San Francisco downtown or Denver, Colorado, they have a central bus station where everything conversions and that's the only way to have it. And I'm, I'm just real disappointed that, that this commission did not bring this up and, and hold the RTC their feet to the fire on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll declare the public participation portion of the meeting closed and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]